Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Titusville City Council on January 28, 2020, at 5:30 PM. We have a quorum off the clock declare this meeting open. Do we have anybody, any ministers in the audience that would like to say a invocation? I see nobody, okay. I'm sorry. I do have a cold, so I'll blame it on that tonight, but I'll try and talk into this. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You might want to turn that up a little bit, guys. Speaking to the guys in the back room. Okay, we do have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order. Clerk, please read the procedures for public speaking.
You asked for some invocation, didn't you?
No, I said if there were any ministers.
This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take any formal action on the agenda items at this meeting. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions or requests from the public present. No sign of card is required, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak.
Thank you very much. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
For the allegiance, we declare the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First order of business is special recognitions and presentations, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. We have, we'd like to recognize three employees for the months of November, December, and January. First is Mickey Wright from our IT department, and I think we'll have Chief Lau as well as our IT Director to do the presentation.
You want to go up there? Come on over here. Thank you very, very much. So when our IT Director would be Mr. Sellers over there came on board, we had an opportunity to merge. We've always had our own IT at the Police Department and then the city, so we took that as a great opportunity to merge and try to be more efficient. And I can tell you that it couldn't have taken maybe a day or two before that happened, but Mickey came on board with us and our records folks with having to give out information. We have to redact information from it. There's certain social security numbers and things. So they said, boy, we would really love to have a PDF type of a program where we could redact. And so he said, well, hold on here, timeout. Went up here to the City Hall, and that program already existed, so we had, didn't have to pay and duplicate. On top of all of that, Mickey is so good, he's actually got me computer literate for a while, and that is quite a feat. But they, the whole entire IT department has a can-do attitude, and they make some very complex things and issues so streamlined. But Mickey fits right in with the craziness that happens in our four walls, and we are blessed to have him, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mayor, can we get you to take a picture there?
Hold on. Okay. You sure you want me in there?
Yeah. And next, for the month of December, we'd like to recognize Darcy Floss from the Building Department, and the presentation will be done by Mr. Steve Adams. This is the first time he's ever wore a suit, so he's very comfortable in it.
Great answer.
I am very happy to be here tonight with my coworker, Darcy. She has a tremendous wealth of knowledge and experience with the city. She's been in several departments throughout her career with the city, and most recently we've had a lot of transition with staff and a lot of transition with the various divisions that we work with in community development. And Darcy is such a wonderful example of a cross-trained employee. She's a good mentor to her newly hired employees and even the newly promoted employees. We really depend on Darcy for a lot of information. She's such a tremendous resource to the city, and I'm so happy that she's recognized here tonight for all of her work. She, not only does her core functions as the Building Department Development Specialist, she also assists with business tax receipts and special events and all the walk-in traffic. I mean, Darcy is just a wonderful example of a city employee, and I'm very happy to be a part of her award tonight.
I think you're working at the wrong time. Do I tell how long you've worked here?
Well, I actually, we told you.
Oh, okay. How long did you work here?
I'm probably in my third interview.
I think so, because I think I've known you that long. You've always done a great job, and you do everything you said I'll do. I thank you so much. That's you. I don't know what the floor is.
Chief Lau, I think you want to come up to do the presentation for Parker Landis for the Employee of the Month of January 2020, and good to see Hutch wearing a uniform.
Oh, rare moment. Good evening. Officer Parker Landis conducted a traffic stop, and through his investigative ability, he was able to seize over 19 grams of fentanyl. Fentanyl is one of the, fentanyl is one of the most dangerous drugs out on the street right now. It's actually a trafficking amount with a minimum prison sentence of 15 years. Did an outstanding job, and he also recovered a firearm. Also in this month, Officer Landis responded to a hit-and-run vehicle crash in which a child was hit by a car, and through his tenacity and investigative ability, he was able to match paint transfer and make an arrest to that individual who fled the scene. If that wasn't enough, he also responded to a medical call and was able to perform CPR on a victim, and they were able to make a full recovery based on his medical aid that he rendered. So for all of that, he's Officer of the Month and Employee of the Month, and we're very proud of him. Good job.
Good job. Goodness, community. All right. Good.
He was probably saving a life.
Don't let him tell you you were on your phone. Tell me you were undercover.
Exactly.
And this is for you also. Good job.
Thank you. Mayor.
Congratulations all for the Employees of the Month for November, December, and January. Mayor, the next, and Council, the next item is a presentation of low-impact development. Mr. Fred Mijic? Milisch? The East Central Florida Regional Planning Council will provide a presentation to Council. Sir, welcome.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Okay. Here to talk about low-impact development. Low-impact development is defined as a term used to describe land planning and engineering design approach to managing stormwater runoff. It emphasizes conservation and the use of onsite natural features to protect water quality. This approach implements engineered, engineered, small-scale hydrologic controls to replicate the pre-development hydrologic regime of the watershed through infiltrating, filtering, storing, evaporating, and detaining runoff close to the source. Low-impact development is a type of smart growth that simultaneously conserves green space and manages stormwater effectively. Unlike traditional land use design, low-impact development promotes natural stormwater management techniques that ma, can't even read this anymore, it's kind of small, I'm sorry, that minimizes runoff and helps prevent pollution from getting into the runoff. In some cases, these practices decrease the size of the traditional.
Sir, we can't hear you.
Sorry about that. It decreases the size of the traditional retention and detention basins and can be less costly than conventional stormwater control mechanisms. So some examples of low-impact development is conserve green space, the natural terrain protects soil from disturbance and compaction. I wonder if I can go around this way so I can read it. I'm having a hard time. I apologize for your.
No, that's all right. No problem.
It uses permeable pavement. It's hard, yet penetrable surfaces reduce runoff by allowing water to move through them into the groundwater below, and it reduces roadway surfaces that result in more permeable land area. Also, it talks about disconnected impervious areas. It separates localized detention areas to help limit the velocity and the amount of water that must be handled by the end pipe water quali, and quality and quantity facilities. It uses vegetated swales, which are alternatives to the curb and gutter systems. Vegetated swales convey water, slows the runoff, and promotes infiltration. Swales may be installed along residential streets, highways, or parking lot medians. A more expensive way is green roof systems, and these systems can significantly reduce the rate and quantity of runoff from the roof and provide buildings with thermal insulation and improved aesthetics. Some more examples are stormwater reuse. You use surface ponds, underground catchment devices, or sufficial aquifers that store rainwater for future irrigation reuse. It can be cisterns or rain barrels. Bio-retention basins and rain gardens or small vegetated depressions in the landscape, and they collect and filter stormwater into the soil. And clustering of homes in the development process, concentrating structures to smaller areas for reserves, more open space, and natural areas to be used for recreation, visual aesthetics, and wildlife habitat. The University of Wisconsin did a study, my alma mater, by the way, and I'm not going to read all this, but in large print, you can see that the urban forest systems intercept rainfall, and it retains an average of 20% of the annual rainfall in the canopy of trees and increases infiltration into the soil by up to 3.5x compared to open space not having a tree cover. That's compared to like a field, so trees are very valuable. So this is an illustration of this, and these numbers are just estimates, but on the upper left, you can see that if there is natural ground cover, only 10% goes in runoff, 25% goes to shallow infiltration and 25 into deep infiltration, while the remaining 40% goes to evapotranspiration. To the right of that is when you have 10% to 20% impervious surface, and the runoff increases to 20% as well, and the other numbers go down. On the bottom left is 35% to 50%, and now you have 30% runoff, and the other numbers go commensurately less. Finally, when you have 70% to 100% impervious surface, up to over 50%, 56% in this instance, is runoff that has to be handled by your stormwater system. On this graph, you might take a second to understand this, on the left axis is rainfall, which is the blocks, and the runoff is the curved line, and the bottom axis is time. What it's showing that when you have rainfall in a developed area, the runoff increases dramatically, and you have a flash flood type situation, whereas the bottom green line is for the undeveloped scenario where the runoff has a lot more chance, or the rain has a lot more chance to infiltrate down into the ground, and only a small amount of it goes to runoff. You need to avoid soil compaction, and compaction usually happens in the development process, but you can see on the left, the soil particles are far apart. When it's compacted by trucks or equipment going over it, it gets put, it gets crunched together, and once it's compacted, it's impossible to uncompact it. So on the bottom, on the left, is the mineral matter. So in the uncompacted stage, it's only 45%, and the rest can be air and water for when you have rainfall, it can go into the soil. But when it's compacted, only 12% and 12% of the soil and air have a chance to go down through the compaction, so 74% of it can be the solids that really can't take the water. So typical Florida development, on the upper left, you clear the land and you burn it. Then on the right, you have the graders come and move the earth around, and typically on the bottom left, they dig these big stormwater ponds, and that soil gets put on the land to raise it for development to higher levels. So you end up on the bottom right, you can see the street, the stormwater pond, and that pipe goes directly into the water, into their stormwater pond. So the top left, that's what you're left with, the sidewalks and the streets and the gutters. To the right of that is the building starting to get built. In the bottom left, you have the new development, and you have to lay sod with a thin layer of organic, and underneath that is, of course, the sand. And then you have your nice development with, it looks very nice with a couple of trees that are required, the street and the sidewalks. But then on the upper left, that grass starts to go bad in Florida. It's not a natural growing plant here, so you have to put fertilizers on it and pesticides on it, and then you have to water it because it just has that thin layer of sod and the organic underneath it just doesn't do much for it, it's just sand, so you have to water it. And then you water, the bottom left, you can see you water into the streets, and the fertilizers and all the chemicals get washed into the street as well, and then those go into your stormwater ponds. So on the left is conventional approach that requires clear-cutting, mass-grading, and the use of impervious surfaces, gutters, pipes, and ponds to collect and treat runoff. It requires altering and destroying the natural hydrology and to the, and the ability of the landscape to absorb rainwater and capture the pollutants. LID, on the other hand, it uses a wide array of techniques that work with the landscape soils, drainage patterns, and vegetation to minimize impacts. Integrated management controls retain, detain, infiltrate, and filter runoff by mimicking the pre-development hydrology. Often, low-impact development designs increase lot yield and reduce infrastructure costs. And you can see instead of two large ponds on the left, there's several smaller ponds that do the job of the big pond. Low-conventional planning design, you have the wide streets, large lots, clearing and grading, cul-de-sacs, enclosed drainage systems for stormwater conveyance, and large detention ponds. A low-impact development, you avoid the impacts by preserving the natural features and use conservation design techniques. You reduce impacts by reducing the impervious cover, and you manage the impacts by utilizing natural features and low-impact development techniques to manage the stormwater. You can see a rain garden in here where the water from the street and the sidewalk would go into that rain garden to get a first treatment and get cleansed. So the design addresses conservation, minimize impervious surface, surface area, dispersal of water runoff, conservation of stream and wetland buffers, and ecological landscaping. Also, better site design on roadways and driveways. It calls for narrower streets, which is less impervious area. Alternatives to cul-de-sacs and shared driveways. On the, on the left side of that, you can see one road that goes around and serves all the houses. You can see superimposed in the middle of that is the traditional cul-de-sac that would be all paved. So other designs are around besides cul-de-sacs that use a lot of pavement and have more runoff. Plus, you have a play area for the kids. So wanted to just briefly talk about Lake Alice in the University of Florida. It's a stormwater pond, and it's about 129 acres, and you can, you can see on, this doesn't work very well, but on the right-hand side, most of the water enters on the right-hand side, and through a series of weirs and levees, it meanders, it directs it to get cleansed through the different vegetation, and then it goes to the water area on the left side, and it actually goes into drainage wells after that into the aquifer. But it's 129 acres. It may be similar to Titusville's chain of lakes that I read about today. Most of the U.S. campus drains to Lake Alice, and 40% of the campus is impervious surfaces, mostly parking lots and buildings. So that's 23,000 parking lots, and you can assume the students especially, at least 10% of those cars leak fluids. 23,000 vehicles and their normal hydrocarbons and heavy metals and other contaminants during a rain event go down to Lake Alice. Other options are pervious pavement, and this is a design here that, you can see the car on the top, and this is the stone and large rocks in between allow for the water to go down, and then it goes to the bottom, and it slowly infiltrates down to the bottom, down to the aquifer. On the right-hand side, that, I guess it's not working on here, but on the right-hand side is an observation well, and then on the upper left of that diagram, you, under the car, to the left of it is an outfall, so the water, if it gets, too much water gets in it, it still has an outfall to go to other drainage systems. The bottom left is more of a rain garden. It also has the rock and outfalls in place, and, but it's a good way to store the water and cleanse it for the, most of this, almost 99% of the storms that happen can be handled in these systems. And on the right is just what a pervious parking area might look like, and what might be under it is on, is on the top. Also, very low-impact development, it could be rain barrels. We have five of them around our house, and we use them a lot to water the plants, or it could be a little more sophisticated like a cistern that either just lets it seep into the groundwater, or you could use that for irrigation as well. And these are just more pictures. These are roadside swales that allow the water to get cleansed. Bio-retention applications on parking lot islands, median strips, residential lots, and office parks. You can see that these are very attractive. And then bio-retention applications for urban retrofits. You can see on the right-hand side, that's just looks like a little, a traditional island, but you could take a traditional island and dig out the center a little bit and put some plants in it, and you can see the stormwater grate there, but what you might not be able to see is right to the left of it is. right to the left of it is a knockout in the concrete, so the water will first go into that stormwater area. It'll get cleansed, it'll infiltrate into the ground, and then when it overflows, then it goes back into the normal, into the other drain that's there. But, you know, 80% of the rainfalls can be handled in this small area, especially if you have several of them around the parking lot. Just some more pictures of swales, you just see it just rolls right into, over the grass, into the swell, and then into the drainage system there on the left-hand side. So code considerations, if you're considering doing something with your city, usually the code says on the left-hand side, "A landscaping plan shall show the dimensions of the planted area and proposed species," whereas it could read something like, "The landscaping plan shall incorporate the stormwater management approach and grading plan for the site, and shall indicate clearly the location and size of all landscaped and vegetated areas, green roofs, rainwater storage systems, and areas of permeable surface that are intended to provide stormwater treatment or control functions." So if the code language does not clearly state that green infrastructure is an acceptable or preferred approach to managing stormwater, green infrastructure will not likely be considered in development proposals, design plans, or capital projects. Existing outside regulations might impact your municipality, you might have regulatory requirements in addition to the usual stormwater permits, you might have TMDL requirements and basin management action plan requirements. So removing barriers to green infrastructure practices could help mitigate specific pollutants identified in a BMAP. Revising your code may help meet your pollution reduction goals. Other suggestions if you're intending to change your code is to get the support from allies to educate community leaders. Specify exactly what is allowed to overcome negative complaints from any neighbors, they know what can and can't be done. The cost for green infrastructure is documented to be less costly, and make sure to include maintenance of green infrastructure installations because they do need maintenance, just like your regular stormwater ponds. With that, that's it. This is my contact information if anybody has any questions. Thank you very much.
Counsel, any questions?
I don't know where to start. Is there?
Thank you. I got my mind, I did that. So you were indicating that the low-impact development would decrease the infrastructure cost?
It can.
In what way?
Well, it takes a lot of land to put in the stormwater ponds, especially some of the big ones, so that land, instead of being used for that, could be used for development because if you have a lot of smaller ponds around, it could be an amenity, and it doesn't take up as much space in total as the large pond.
Okay.
That's the theory, anyway.
And you said that one of the ideas was to reduce the road surfaces? Okay, I'm going back to... The area between the road and the sidewalk, that swell area, is there a distance that it needs to be? Is there a suggested distance, is there a recommended distance?
Well, it would depend on how much right-of-way you have, obviously. If you were going to be lowering, or in new development, if you have a narrower street surface, that would allow more room for the swales in the green area and still maintaining sidewalks.
Okay. So we would have a narrower road, we'd have our swell, and then we'd have our sidewalk?
Yes, yes. And that would vary depending upon what was available and the design that you wanted to have. A stormwater engineer would have to verify the numbers there.
Okay. And I gotta tell you, the eco roofs, I don't know if we're allowed to have those. Ms. Bisaka, are we allowed to have eco roofs? Do...
What's the word?
The eco roof systems, the planning on the roof?
Oh, the roofs.
The roofs.
Yeah, I don't know.
Sorry, Steve. I'm just curious. Oh, yeah. Can you do a turn? Can we do that?
What was the question?
No, forgot.
You have green roofs.
The roofs with plants on them?
Okay.
The eco, I think you called it eco roofs.
To my knowledge, there are no restrictions in the Florida Building Code for the roof that you're describing.
Right.
I would certainly expect to see a site-specific engineered design that could withstand the additional loads that that roof would occur with the weight. So it may not be a realistic discussion to deploy those types of roofs on existing structures that are not fitted out with the appropriate trusses or joists.
But a new structure.
But it's certainly a realistic, yeah, for a new construction project where it's site-specific designed for that kind of load, certainly realistic.
Okay. Is there anything or a code that would stop that?
I'm not aware of any local restrictions that would...
Peggy, shake your head now, too.
Right.
So I got two of you saying no. Okay.
Any other questions from counsel? Vice Mayor?
I'm trying to understand, oh, we get yelled at here. I'm trying to understand, when you talked about Lake Alice at University of Florida, were you, was that a good example or that was not good?
Oh, that was a good example.
That was a good example?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, because then I go to my next question. Why do we, because it doesn't look like Lake Alice did that, why do we like a lot of smaller ponds as opposed to one big pond? That's what you're saying, right?
Right. I think overall, you want a lot of small ponds. This is just a situation to talk about how the plants can cleanse it, cleanse the water as it goes through the plants.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure, I didn't really have a stand either way. I'm saying, okay, Lake Alice, it looks really nice, but is this good or bad? Most of these examples you show us, were they part of the initial project, or were they something that was an add-on to remedy the situation?
I believe that most all of those were originally built that way. There were some retrofits that I did show up there, though.
So where I'm going with that is, if there are situations that down the road, we say, or whoever says, "We'd like to do this better," that can be done?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Your Honor.
Actually, this is for Mr. Rice, who I saw sneak in. I think he's sitting behind you. Woody, can I ask you a question? Okay. So as somebody who is designing housing around here, housing development, would this work at Titusville? Is there any reason it wouldn't work?
Yeah, I think low-impact development is definitely a way to go in the future, and if you notice in some of the pictures, and I'm sorry I got here a little late to see all of his presentation, but one of the things I noticed just in the few slides I saw is there was some relaxation in things like curbing. We require decurb, which retains the water, doesn't allow it to sheet flow into a vegetated swell in between parking areas. So there's a lot of little things like that that we need to do to be able to implement this completely. But yeah, I think long-term, it would work.
Okay. I was just curious. And then this is for, I guess either Steve, well, it could be for Woody. On one of the slides, it says landscaping plan...
He's not listening if you're asking.
Oh.
Mr. Rice? Mr. Rice?
Woody.
He can't hear you.
Woody. I think she has another, might have another question for him.
Okay.
Aren't you sorry you came?
No, no, I actually was running late, and I wanted to see all of his presentation, I just was running a little late.
One of the things they're suggesting is that we put in the code, "The landscaping plan shall incorporate the stormwater management approach and grading plan for the site, and shall indicate clearly the location and size of all landscaped and vegetated areas, green roofs, rainwater storage system, areas of permeable surfacing that are intended to provide stormwater treatment or control functions." And I hope I'm not putting you on the spot, I guess I really am, but Woody, and then I was Peggy, but would that be something to get us started?
Well, you know, I think as engineers and as civil engineers, it's sort of a marriage between landscape and engineering, because I think you still have to do all the treatment and show all the storage and treatment volumes and all those things, you need to design it as an engineer. But then when you start crossing over with vegetation, that's where we start getting outside of our level of expertise with what's the proper type of plants that you should plant in these areas first to make them survive. And that's where the marriage between landscape architect and a civil engineer, so a civil engineer can design the swales, do all those things, get the grades right, do all that, calculate the volumes and do all that, then I think it needs to be turned over to a landscape architect to plant the proper plants to make sure it's successful, if that's what your question.
I think that was.
Okay.
I think so. Thank you.
Anything else?
Let me ask Peggy the same question. What do you, Peggy, what do you think?
There's an open question.
I promise not to answer that.
Well, not all of it.
No, but I can't argue with Mr. Rice. I do want to let you know that currently, the ordinance that you directed staff to do has to do with tree protection.
Correct.
So if, and counsel has already told us to move forward with low-impact development. So that, we told you that was a longer-term strategy, and the reason is because we do have to look at multiple different avenues and perspectives, but I see no reason why our ordinance couldn't head that direction as we go to the next step in this process.
Okay. I think that'd be great. Thank you.
Member Jordan?
Yeah, thanks. It's for you. I was looking at your presentation, I'm a little perplexed, because it seems to me that we are trying to preserve what is existing. Let's just say we're going to do a development, and we're going to preserve as many plants as existing as possible. But when I look at your planning process, when I look at what it is today, where you got a sidewalk and you got a little boulevard, you want to change that and have planting and maybe a little swell, which I like. The question I have, though, as a developer, you're really taking land away from the land owner, if you will. His quarter acre lot is not going to be a quarter acre lot, he's not going to have a large front yard anymore because you're going to have a sidewalk that's actually coming, encroaching into his front yard. Is that correct?
No, not necessarily. I think there's a lot of different designs, maybe one of the pictures showed that.
Yeah.
You can design it, you can design it a lot differently. If you, there's cluster development is one thing that I had mentioned that would make the lot smaller, but in return of that, everybody would have a larger common area, partially would be for rainwater retention, but partially it could be for more recreation amenities as well.
Yeah, I honestly don't have a problem with the small yard because I think...
Less moving?
Well, less moving, but I think more people want less maintenance and all of that, so that's not a big problem. The other question I have is you were talking about the cul-de-sac. It was kind of interesting to me that you were talking about the cul-de-sac now has a lot of concrete. You also talked about, you know, grass is not something that is normal in a certain area, so you've got to put fertilizer and water and all that stuff on it, that's what you said.
Yes.
But then when I look at your new way of doing things, all I see is a modified cul-de-sac, and you've got grass right in the middle, which tells me you're going to have to fertilize that grass, you're going to have to cut the grass, you're going to have to water the grass. So it seems like to me you're defeating the purpose of doing it.
Yeah, I didn't mean that it had to be grass, it could be a forest, you could keep it trees and natural if you wanted to, or you could keep it, you could have some of a field for kids to play in.
So with the focus...
By no means does it have to be grass.
Okay, so would the focus be with low development, that we would try to maintain as much of the vegetation that is existing on the developed property and not replant or plant new shrubs on the property?
That would be the preferred strategy, to keep what's there naturally.
Okay.
Yes.
And all of this is about new development, not existing development?
It's mostly for new development, however, you can retrofit some existing areas.
Okay, my last question is, it sounded to me, from what you were saying, the developer actually will be spending less money because he doesn't have to put all the culverts and all that stuff, and I get that. But if a developer has 10 acres of land and he gets a Woody or someone says, okay, how much, how many houses can I put on this? I would think that you would be putting less houses on that developed land.
It depends on, every site is different, but I think that overall, you would be using less land for stormwater and more land for non-stormwater purposes because you would have smaller natural areas that would retain the water, and then you would, if necessary, you would have a much smaller master stormwater area for overflow situations.
So you think you could fit the same number of houses to allow the developer to get his return on his...
Yes, that is, that is what literature says.
That would be the right factor, exactly. Okay. All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from counsel? Kirk, do we have any cards on this?
We do have a card, but I think they're supposed to speak under petitions unless you would like to do something different.
No, we can do it under petitions, that's fine. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next item, city manager?
Yes, sir, the letters of appreciation. Wow. Letters of appreciations that were received for the following employees, Joe Lynn Dunhoff for the Assistant City Clerk, Brenda Evans, our records manager, and from the Fire Department, Lieutenant Mike Abernathy, firefighter Kyle George, and Battalion Chief Jeff Harris.
Thank you, sir. Under petitions and requests, is there anybody that would like to speak?
On LID?
Sir?
On LID.
Anything you want, well, actually, you can't, can you? Kenny?
Sure, we're gonna use this time, if anyone wants to speak about LID or any other petitions, we'll do that at this time.
Stan, come on up while we're talking. So you can. I'm using this sign as my, part of my presentation. My name is Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue, Registered Professional Engineer, been here since 1971, former employer of the city. And I'm talking, calling, I've sent you an email on the 24th, and I've sent a copy of it to you, that was the handout. And the subject of that email is that there is nonsense and dishonesty and corruption in the city of Titusville, and so I'm going to take this time to go over some fraud. In this case, I use this sign, it involves the city manager and mayor. It's represented on YouTube on February 12, 2019, and numerous council meetings thereafter. And the fraud involves $70,000. $70,000 is what the mayor and the city manager have expressed that the city spent on a report prepared by, I want to use the word imaginary engineering organization, no name, and that this imaginary engineering organization reviewed my correspondence... And that this imaginary engineering organization reviewed my correspondence from 2012 to 2019. It's the presentation on February 12. I wrote here ORB 8506, page 1374. On those pages is that I did a word-for-word transcription of this discussion on February the 12th. But when I went to the... When I go to the city clerk's office and I go to the records clerk, it can't be found. There's no contract. There's no invoice for the $70,000. There's no report. There's no naming of this engineering company that reported, supposedly reported that my... There was... Just about everything that I wrote was in error, and it shows certainly my incompetence. So this is an example of fraud and dishonesty by our city manager and our mayor, and it's supported by council here, by their code of silence, their refusal to discuss this matter, refusal to respond to emails and telephone calls. They have a might-makes-right tactic policy, code of silence, closed-door policy, broken promises. So this is dishonesty that should be dealt with, and I requested the resignation of Mr. Jordan. May I have three more minutes? Your time is up, sir. Okay, and your resignation also. Thank you. Just for your edification, he has been sent the materials multiple times. We've discussed it with him multiple times, and he refuses to believe what we're sending him is what he wants to see, I guess. And he does this every week. So, okay. Next... No, we're out of items. Any other petitions, sir? And if you'd like to... Well, let's Mr. Klein, if you come up, sir.
I'm Bill Klein. I live at 3 Indian River Avenue, apartment 906. I had put in a write-up to say that I wanted to speak on LIDs, and that's what my petition is going to be about. I like the discussion we had. It looks very good. I have a lot of data on LID-type building and LID layout of communities. I have seen stuff that shows you save a lot of stormwater. You don't need as much stormwater capability to remove the stormwater from a community like that if you have a lot of absorption. Like the small lakes that he was showing, the trees, the bushes and the shrubs around the area will absorb a tremendous amount of water and reduce the amount of infrastructure that you will need. And if...
Oh, would you move back a little bit?
Sure.
In this case, you're coming across loud and clear, but maybe two left.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We just had the technician back there ask you to step back, so you're fine now, I think.
Thank you. But I just would like to say I really like what I saw. I would like to be a volunteer to help anyone, you know, like I know the TEC will probably be looking for volunteers to help them on projects. If there's anything I can do to help you all develop ideas and programs for LID development, I will give you any volunteer work that I can do because I really would like to see that done here, and I think it would be great for Titusville.
You are a member of the TEC, are you not, Mr. Klein? No?
No, I'm not, mainly because if I was a member of the TEC, I couldn't talk to TEC members outside of public. So I think you all need to have volunteers to work on projects directed by the TEC, and that's where I'm willing to volunteer. You know, like you all have Friday events here in Titusville, and you all could have the TEC represented there, but you can only have one member, and I would volunteer to help you all.
Sir, that wasn't the question I asked. You answered it at first, that you're not... My suggestion would be, because they are, as you know, are environmental commission, and I suggest you bring it to them first, and they work it over, and then maybe they can present it to us with their opinions on it.
Sure, I'm willing to do that. I just wanted you all to know I really liked this LID, and I thank you for the presentation.
Very good. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Anyone else that would like to speak? Name and address for the record, please.
David Bartow. I live in Indian Harbor Beach. I serve on the Board of the Marine Resources Council.
Yes, sir.
It's my pleasure to take you back to LID. Low-impact development is not new. It's been around for decades. It is heavily used. In fact, areas like Chesapeake Bay and Oregon have adopted it statewide. It is cost-effective. Let me take it aside. When you spoke of green grass, the grass that we saw is not... I don't believe personally that is the right grass. That's shallow root grass. Just saying the words causes trauma, St. Augustine. But there are deep-rooted grasses that are ideal for those kinds of swales. So not a problem. I don't know if you've seen the UCF Stormwater Academy 2070 Plan, which says that the expectation of population in Florida in 2070 is 32 billion... 32 million, excuse me.
Got me nervous right there.
Which is 9 million more than we have now. We're seeing about close to 700 new residents a day in the state. In this area, the Orlando, Tampa, Melbourne, Titusville corridor is increasing at a rate considerably higher than the state average. I think they're showing ours is at about 8%. Martin County, as far as the Indian River Lagoon Basin goes, is better at 11%. Both of them are very high. They're all very high. You know as well as I do, we're seeing a lot. We believe that it's crucial to the future of the Indian River Lagoon that we adopt low-impact development throughout the basin at least. Now, we also are very aware that many of our state stormwater rules, management, and permitting requirements actually are obstacles to low-impact development. We are in a project now, very extensive project, that we hope to help change those 40-year-old land use and stormwater management rules so that we can enable local governments like Titusville. And I congratulate you on your progress and your effort and your interest in making this improvement so that we can change those state regulations and permitting rules to enable low-impact development. The EPA recommends it. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection recommends it, but it's still... And it's being done in many areas of Florida. Many counties have adopted it. Many communities like Jacksonville have adopted it, but it's being done on a voluntary basis.
Do you need additional time, sir?
Just one second.
One second? That's not going to be enough. How about one minute? Would that do it? Counselor, I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor? Yes? Go right ahead. You've got one more minute, sir.
The use, the application of it is not a mystery at all. It is completely engineered, and all the engineering data is available. In fact, you can access it on the Internet now. Just go to Sarasota County, go to Jacksonville, Best Management Practices Manual for Low-Impact Development. The engineering is done. The writing of an ordinance to enable low-impact development or require low-impact development in Titusville or any other community is not a hard thing to do because the basin management action... Not the basin management, but the best management practices for LID spell out all the engineering. All that needs to be done to write the ordinance that's already been written, there are a good many models of that ordinance, is to focus on our local topography, geography, hydrology, and all that data is available also. It's in the basin management action plan, and it's in the comprehensive plan already. Just needs to be moved over properly. Thank you very much for your...
Thank you, sir. And if I can, sir, you're certainly welcome to send us any information you'd like to send us, but you're also welcome to speak to our Titusville Environmental Commission. They're actually our experts in that area, and we had a big discussion on that at the last meeting. So I would invite you to go and speak to them sometime and tell them your opinions on things, and they can bring it back to us.
I will. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak under petitions? Come on up. All right, we've got three now. She won't... Laura Lee, you want to go?
Okay.
All right.
I'll go. Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Urban Avenue, MEMS. And we just concluded the best birding festival that we've ever had, our 23rd annual Space Coast Birding and Wildlife Festival. And we had people from all over the world that came here to Titusville to see our birds, and they were astonished at what they saw. Not only just the birds that are out on Merritt Island Wildlife Refuge, which some of them come over here. They actually feed in our neighborhoods, and they're seen in our neighborhoods. They were astounded at the amount of birds that we have in our community itself. And so the low-impact development will help us to be able to retain these assets that very few other communities in Florida have these wonderful features that we have here in Titusville. And so this would be a way that we can guarantee that we can still provide the habitat for the birds that people are coming here to see. Thank you very much.
Let me just say, for those of you who don't know Laura Lee Thompson, she has done many things in this community. This is one in particular that started 23 years ago. She started it with Brevard Nature Alliance, which I had the honor to be on.
You were a founding member of.
That's correct. I appreciate that. And has been a wonderful thing for a community, and I'd like a round of applause for her. Thank you very much. But anybody else? Who was next? Yeah, okay. And then you're after that. Name and address, please.
Kay Saint Orange, 2360 Maryland Avenue, Titusville. Thank you, council, for having Fred Milch provide his excellent presentation on low-impact development strategies to be utilized in proposed developments. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection recommends LID to ensure that future growth does not add to the degradation of the North Indian River Lagoon. The United States EPA indicates LID can help meet discharge requirements, reduce construction costs, and provide benefits over traditional stormwater management approaches. The EPA gives steps for cities in incorporating LID into their stormwater programs. The first step indicated is to update development standards, pass ordinances with LID incentives, and evaluate street design specifications that might prohibit the use of LID practices. I would hope that Mr. Milch's presentation will launch further discussions on incorporating LID into land development regulations. The Florida DEP indicates that stormwater ponds are not as effective at preventing nutrients from entering waterways as they had hoped. LID distributes stormwater across a project site, thus replenishing groundwater supplies rather than sending the stormwater into expensive storm drains and large retention ponds. This is particularly important in areas of critical concern where recharge to the aquifer by rainfall provides for municipal water supply. Trees are an important component of successful LID and stormwater management. Greater tree preservation would decrease the amount of stormwater runoff and pollutants that reach the lagoon. Last week, the city released a draft of new tree protection ordinance to the public. This draft presents some significant provisions for the protection of trees and could go far in preserving larger trees. But as the draft continues to allow removal of 90% of vegetation in developments, further discussions are warranted. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is...
Come on in a little closer and lift it up a little bit. There you go.
All right. My name is... There we go. My name is Lisa Rockman, and I live in Merritt Island. I heard some of the concerns are on the development, on how that'll affect moving forward in costs and whatnot for maintaining... I don't know if the right word is there. But I wanted to share experience that I had. About 25 years ago, I bought a house in Scottsdale, Arizona, that was in a new low-impact development type... They didn't use that phrase, but it was on the side of a mountain, and what they did was the areas where the water was running down naturally, they preserved those areas, left the water, so they didn't have to create a new stormwater system. They just used the ones that were already there. They put some, like, pads along there, so they had the native vegetation, you had the like sidewalks, wide sidewalk for riding their bikes, the kids for hiking, whatever. Those... That development in those properties actually cost more and maintained and stayed in a higher value because of all the recreational and the aesthetics of the area and the recreational parts of it. It actually became, you know, an area that where people were more prone to want to purchase in. So I wanted to share that with you. Also, I've worked with stormwater engineers, site engineers, on some projects, and I just... I know in Florida, a lot of the stuff that's already on the table for stormwater stuff, like they're talking about the calculations you've got to figure out for how much is permeable, and you have to figure out where the water's going to go, how much is coming down in the rain. Those calculations, they already have to do all that. So all you have to do is make a few little tweaks to some of the language in this stuff. It wouldn't be really difficult at all, and there's a lot of cities in Florida, like they said, already do that. It doesn't take much to tweak it a little bit, just to make it a lot easier to do not only better stormwater as far as like capture and pollution and everything, but it's also more beautiful. You end up with a lot more natural, beautiful look with the plants and everything, so just wanted to share that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Ma'am?
Good evening. I'm Mary Spar. I live in Cocoa. I'm really excited about the low-impact development. And one thing, as you were discussing, that really struck me is your questions. I was just really pleased to see that you were looking at it from both points of view, from the development point of view and how it would benefit them, and also from the environmental point of view. So thank you so much for your careful consideration of the great ideas that Mr. Milch brought. I'd like to say that we need to develop with LID practices to maintain and improve the health of the Indian River Lagoon and the St. John's River, so it'll be a real benefit. On another subject, the tree regulations, I'd like to express my thanks to Peggy Busaka for providing a draft that is, quote, "under construction of the tree regulations" to interested members of the public. This kind of helpful gesture does not happen very often, and I really appreciate it. In my opinion, of all the municipalities in Brevard County, Titusville has the most to lose economically and in terms of quality of life if the tendency of developers to clear-cut trees is allowed to continue. For example, the birding festival is dependent on an abundance of habitat with sufficient canopy for birds. Right now, developments must preserve 10% vegetation... Vegetation that does not require excess irrigation. You do not specifically require a certain amount of tree canopy. The rewrite of the tree regulations gives us the opportunity to prevent clear-cutting of trees by requiring tree canopy, not just preserve 10% vegetation. By providing the draft early in the process to citizens, your staff is allowing input from citizens who believe that tree canopy requirements are essential for Titusville's economy and the citizens' quality of life. Once again, thank you so much to your planning staff.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone else. I think we have done all of what was needed at this meeting. The next meeting we'll meet at, we'll meet at the 10th. So, with that, thank you all for coming, and we'll see some of you at the next meeting this evening.